And we will call to order our November 18th Cary Planning and Zoning Board Meeting. We'll begin by adopting our agenda. Do we have any adjustments to the agenda? If not, can we have a motion to accept the agenda as stated?
So moved.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
That motion carries unanimously. And next, we need to approve the meeting minutes from our October 21st meeting. Do we have any corrections, additions, adjustments?
I move that we approve the meeting minutes from the October meeting.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion in two seconds. We'll say that's yours, Ms. Granton.
Thank you.
Discussion. All those in favor of the motion as stated say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. That motion carries unanimously. And then, we will come to our first public hearing. And before I start the public hearing process, I want to just go over some of the rules for folks that may not have experienced this before. We start by having the case presented by a member of our staff that we're going to present at this podium right here, the one with the display monitor on it. Following the staff presentation, the applicant will have the opportunity to present their perspective on the case. They have 10 minutes to do that. After the applicant has completed their comments, I will open the public hearing. I will ask if you want to speak in the public hearing. First of all, fill out one of the comment cards and give it to our clerk. And when you're ready to speak, please come down this stairway to my right, your left. You will speak at the podium to your left, my right. You'll notice there's a little black box on top. When you begin speaking, there's going to be a green light lit for the first four and a half minutes. That green light will stay lit, and then it will turn orange. And that will stay orange for 30 seconds. And at the end of five minutes, you'll get a red light. At that point in time, I'm going to ask you to conclude your comments to be fair to other speakers. I ask if there's multiple people here that are interested in the same case and have the same perspective, maybe you can pick a spokesman. And I ask you to adjust your comments to all members of the board. And we will not probably question public hearing speakers. That doesn't mean we aren't interested. It's just it's not our policy to get into a dialogue. With that, I'd like to start with case 13 REZ 18, the Ogburn property. Ms. Granton?
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to recuse myself from this case.
Okay. And you have a personal interest?
Yes. In regard to this particular property, I will recuse myself from the case. My windfall neighborhood borders the property, and my home is in close proximity to the property. Depending on how the applicant ultimately develops this property could have a negative impact on the value of my home. Therefore, I have personal financial interest in this case. After review of the Town of Cary Ethics Guidelines Policy Statement 147, I have included my financial interest in this case. This qualifies me from sitting in judgment of the case. And stepping aside, we'll ensure the applicant receives a fair and unbiased review of their application.
That's probably the best recused statement I've heard. At this point, we need a motion to accept Mr. Warner's request for recusal.
I'll make a motion that we accept Mr. Warner's request for recusal.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I will second.
We have a... Mr. Miller got in, I think, under the wire there. Discussion. All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
That motion carries unanimously. Thank you. We will invite you back once we have completed this case. Okay, now...
Well, actually, no, Mr. Chairman. I must point out that, like Mr. Warner mentioned, the property windfall surrounds the property we're about to discuss today. I live across the street, across Penny Road from this area. I am in a completely different neighborhood. However, my homeowner's association is the same as his. Be that as it may, I do not have a financial or personal stake in this. And I believe that I can still provide a fair and unbalanced decision in this matter.
Thank you. Now, I think we're finally back to you.
Thank you. Good evening. For your consideration is a request to rezone approximately 18.49 acres located near the intersection of Penny Road and Killingsworth Drive. Subject property is highlighted here in yellow, shown north of Penny Road. And an aerial view that zoomed in shows that the subject property is currently vacant. We're looking at four different parcels of land. One of them is a very narrow sliver here along Gray Friars Lane. The current land use plan designation for the subject property is low-density residential. The existing zoning is residential 12 and residential 40. The applicant is proposing residential 20 conditional use. The conditions proposed by the applicant at the initial town council public hearing were to provide a minimum lot width of 100 feet and a minimum roadway setback of 35 feet. The residential 20 zoning district would require a minimum lot size of 20,000 square feet. Since that initial public hearing, the applicant has added a new condition stating that they would set a maximum of 20 lots. And because of that new condition, that's why there's another public hearing tonight. Property owners within 400 feet of the subject property were notified both of the initial town council public hearing and of the public hearing this evening. The property was posted and advertised. Neighborhood concerns that have been expressed to staff and were voiced at the town council public hearing pertain to the minimum lot size, what sort of buffering was to be expected between the different developments, the quality of the development. There was much concern about the street network and Cary's connectivity requirements, and concern about adherence to previous zoning conditions that were applied to the property in 1993. Those zoning conditions in 1993 required a minimum lot width of 100 feet, which has been introduced here, a minimum lot area of 20,000 square feet, which is required with the R-20 zoning, a 35-foot streetscape buffer along Penny Road. Well, that was not accepted by staff because there's a 50-foot streetscape buffer required along Penny Road. So the applicant couldn't offer something that was less restrictive. So Cary's current regulations would be more restrictive than those 1993 zoning conditions. And this shows you the 50-foot streetscape requirement along Penny Road. The site is impacted, according to Cary's GIS maps, by a stream buffer approximately in the center of the subject property. Field determination would be required at the time of site plan review. Cary's parks and greenways master plan shows that there is a proposed greenway trail along Penny Road in close proximity to the subject property. And Penny Road is identified as a major thoroughfare on our transportation plan. At this time, I would like to ask the applicant to come forward and speak to the case. And then, following the public hearing, I'm available for your questions. Just your rezoning request?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, good evening. My name is Matthew Danielson, and I'm here representing Kayah Navy &amp; Homes. And I agree completely with staff. And so I'll keep my presentation short. On the screen, you'll see that the zoning is for R-12 and R-40. And what we have requested actually is a down zoning for R-20. Basically, the idea is on 18-plus acres is to build 20 homes. And basically, it will be like-for-like. So what is currently existing, like-size lots, like-size homes. And I could go through everything, but again, I think staff did a wonderful job. So I will, if it's okay, I'll keep the remainder of my time available to answer any questions the board may have. Thank you.
Thank you. At this point in time, I'm going to open the public hearing and invite anyone that would like to address us to approach the podium.
Good evening. My concern is simple.
Could we start with your name, please?
You know, I had the same problem the last time. Okay? My name is Lynn Heschleys. I am on Moreland Court 101, right at the corner of Moreland and Gray Friars. My concern is the same one from the last time I spoke, and that is the connectivity issue. There has been discussion about the Moreland Court cul-de-sac being, becoming a through road to satisfy the connectivity needs. There was a lot of discussion about the process that's used as part of these rezoning proposals. And I know that it was said that the road or the connectivity issues don't happen until later on. Okay? Breaking the cul-de-sac or, you know, having that become a through street will have distinct valuation concerns and will take the homeowner property and valuations from Moreland Court down. I would very much urge to cancel, to not approve this zoning change without ensuring the integrity of the cul-de-sac remains in place. Okay? That's what I want to leave you with tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Would anyone else like to address the board?
Good evening. Mr. Chairman, members of the committee. My name is Bill Taylor. I live at 103 Moreland Court, just next door to Mr. Hirsch. And I just wanted to piggyback on his comments. There's a major concern that the integrity of the cul-de-sac would be impacted, and it would be a huge negative impact on our valuations. And I don't know if that's in consideration here tonight, but I want to make sure that we underline that as much as we can. That's a major concern. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address us? Anyone at all? Seeing no one approach the podium, I'm going to close the public hearing and open this case up for board discussion. Questions?
Just to follow up on the public hearing comments, would you be able to point out Moreland Court on there? I think I found it, but just for everyone's benefit.
Moreland Court is the cul-de-sac right here. And the speakers tonight live on this side of Moreland Court. This is a vacant parcel here at the end of the cul-de-sac.
And am I correct that the proposal to extend that that was discussed is a result of Cary's connectivity ordinance that...
That's the... There's no site plan for review right now. The site plan can't be submitted until the zoning is in place. There is a connectivity requirement. I would like to point out that if the applicant were to come forward with the existing zoning, there is a connectivity requirement. So that would be something that would need to be addressed at the time of site plan review. So connectivity to the north, south, east, and west, connectivity to public roads, those are all part of our land development ordinance. There may be an opportunity to review that at the time of site plan review and take into consideration some of the topography challenges with the site. But it is not at the time of rezoning that those things can be determined.
So the site plan would really be a staff and council thing that would follow rezoning regardless of what the...
Depending on the circumstances, evaluated at the time of site plan review.
And one other question. Could you go to the slide that showed what's now on the right side, sort of the whole vicinity with the proposed zoning or existing zoning? Because I think it had the surrounding zoning, which is R-20 to the north and R-8 to the south.
Correct. This is R-20 surrounding it, and then across the street is R-8.
Thank you.
Other questions?
Yes, I'd like to ask a question about the 20-foot buffer between adjoining lots from different developments. The applicant had mentioned they're trying like-for-like, such that the new homes would look very similar to the existing ones. So the easternmost portion of the property we're looking at today is the western half of the Moreland Court cul-de-sac. Since theoretically, both sides would look very similar, do we still necessitate that 20-foot buffer in between the two adjoining lots?
There is no buffer requirement. There is a landscape strip requirement, 20 feet, but it is not an actual buffer. It is an area that can be on the individual lot. So when the lot sizes are 8,000 square feet or greater in size, there's no requirement for a buffer. But back to your question about this area in here, if this is all part of the same development, where is it you're asking? Where would the buffer be located?
I would assume it would be right where you just put the line. No, to the right.
Here?
Yes.
There would be a streetscape requirement. There is not a streetscape, but a building setback requirement as one of the zoning conditions.
But there would be nothing necessary between the two lots?
No buffer requirement, not a long road frontage. It's when you have properties that back up to each other is when you're going to see that landscape strip requirement, when you've got two different developments coming in, that you'd see that introduced.
I have a second question, if I may. The Penny Road frontage, we had mentioned a little while ago, a proposed trail. Were there... Are there any improvements to Penny Road as part of this?
Let me take a look here. Let's see. Penny Road is designated as a major thoroughfare. The existing road section is three lanes with approximately a 60-to-80-foot right-of-way. And the future section would be four lanes with a median and 100 feet of right-of-way. Sidewalk is existing on the south side, but would be required on the north side. And a 14-foot wide outside lane would be required. So the applicant would be required for their half of those improvements.
Thank you.
And I'm sorry to add to that. There's a streetside trail proposed along the subject property along Penny Road's frontage. So again, that would be the developer's responsibility for their frontage on the subject property.
Other questions?
Yes, the access to this property, of course, this is the question about the access to Moreland Court. But what else is planned for access to you?
Nothing is planned at this point because those would be evaluated at the time of site plan and require the applicant to coordinate with DOT. So in terms... So we don't know at this point in time what DOT would say about whether or not they would allow another access point on Penny Road, or, you know, they would want access to come in from Royal Glen Court. So there is nothing tied to the rezoning case that nails down access points.
If DOT permitted access onto Penny Road, would that be required by the town?
I can't answer that at this time. We don't know that at this point.
Okay. What would be the procedure to... that they would follow to avoid access onto Moreland Court? Would they have to request a waiver from the town council?
That's correct.
Does that require a quasi-judicial hearing?
That is correct.
Can I ask the applicant if they are planning to request a waiver?
It's one of those things. I'd like to just get some clarification from legal on that, if I could, because I don't want the applicant to commit to something that sounds as though it's part of a zoning condition.
I know my thought when you asked your question was that it's really not relevant to the decision before you tonight. And so, really, what we're looking at is just the zoning for the site and what their future plans are for access of those sorts of things shouldn't matter in your decision tonight.
Okay. That answers it.
Other questions?
Other questions?
I do have one question. What is our current masonry requirement on residential?
We don't have one on single-family detached, only on attached residential. So, single-family detached homes do not have that requirement.
Okay. So, and there's nothing in any of these conditions that would lead us to require any particular like-for-like scenario?
Correct. So you're absolutely right. No. You know, those are all private matters. If the applicant works with the HOA, they can enter into private agreements. But those are not part of the zoning conditions in terms of building materials. In terms of lot size, building setbacks, those are all like-for-like in terms of the R-20 zoning.
Other questions?
I have one. I just want to clarify an assumption on my part. One of the proposed zoning conditions is the minimum roadway setback shall be 35 feet.
Correct.
And it seems like the prior zoning from 1993
Correct.
was 35 feet. So that entire strip of Penny Road, as it exists now, is 35 feet.
Not Penny Road. Well, that would be just for the homes in this neighborhood. And along the residential streets, Royal Glen, Gray Friars, Moreland Court, there would be a 50-foot requirement along Penny Road because it is a thoroughfare. That's a streetscape. So there's a 50-foot streetscape along Penny Road that exceeds that 35-foot roadway setback. The 35-foot roadway setback is going to apply to those internal residential streets.
Okay. Thank you.
We have no other questions. Can someone make a motion, please? We usually aren't quite this silent.
I'll make a motion. I move that we forward case number 13 REZ 18, Ogburn property, to town council with a recommendation for approval, as it is consistent with the comprehensive plan and all other applicable plans, and is reasonable and in the public interest for the reasons set forth in the staff report and presentation.
Do we have a second? We have a motion and a second discussion.
I'd like to speak to it. I think the reason for my motion was, I think, the tract on average between the existing zoning and the proposed zoning does achieve essentially like-for-like. I think the zoning conditions limit density to something that's quite reasonable. And I absolutely heard the comments from the public hearing and agree with the, in this case, the potential impacts of the connectivity ordinance. But as was pointed out in the discussion, it's really not something that is relevant to this rezoning. It's a site plan issue for council. And I would certainly hope that it would... could be resolved. But unfortunately, I don't think it's really applicable to this rezoning that's before us.
Other comments?
Basically, my reason for seconding this is pretty much a ditto to Mr. Miller's comments. I did sit in on the initial neighborhood meeting, and there seemed to be a rather balanced view about the proposed connectivity here. I know the two speakers tonight have a vested interest in why they're stating what they're stating. But I'm not sure that it truly reflects everybody in that neighborhood. So the fact that it's a non-relevant issue, first of all, secondly, the fact that it does seem to be up for debate, I think everything else here is in congruence with the existing neighborhood. If there are no other...
Yes.
Sorry, Mr. Shaw. I would be thinking seriously about opposing this, just on the basis of the fear that maybe there would be a connection to Moreland Court, knowing that we won't be able to know or decide at this stage whether or not there would be. We have to have that possibility would be considered. And the adverse effect, and I think it would be a very big adverse effect on certain other property, would tend to make me oppose the rezoning. However, that said, the general idea of having R-20 zoning, which is the same as the zoning in the area that almost surrounds it on that side of Penny Road, I like. The fact that there are only going to be 20 units, so it's even less dense than the zoning would require, I like that. I hope we can work out something about the Moreland Court situation that is a problem, I recognize, but it is not really something to be decided now. So I have, you know, both reasons to oppose it and reasons to support it. Unbalanced, I'd support it.
If we have no other...
Just a comment, as far as... I know council has asked us to elaborate on our rationales for our vote a little more. This is a scenario, and I heard the term tonight, like-for-like. I do think this is very appropriate zoning for the area. The R-20 fits. The court issue, this is what makes these hard for us. I agree. I do not like the connectivity issue for Moreland Court. But this is where it's discipline on our part to look at the issue of what we have before us, which is the zoning versus the site plan issue, which is the road. I will support the issue, but I do want to pass some rationale on to council that I am not in favor of Moreland Court being connected.
Hearing, no other comments? I'll call this to a vote. All those in favor of the motion as stated say aye.
Aye.
Motion to oppose. That motion carries unanimously. And we will move on to our next case.
I move that we return Mr. Warner to our meeting.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor of the motion as stated say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Mr. Nicholas, we're ready for you.
Okay. Good evening. This is a request to rezone approximately 16.2 acres located at 9475 and 9493 Chapel Hill Road. Properties are located on the south side of Chapel Hill Road, adjacent to the intersection with Fairbanks Road, approximately 2,000 feet east of the intersection with Northwest Cary Parkway. Both properties are located within the town's corporate limits. The slide shows an aerial view of the subject properties. There are existing dwellings located on both the properties near the road. You can also see that the sites are predominantly wooded in the rear of the lots. The properties are currently zoned residential 40. The area in white is land that's in Mooresville and is under Mooresville zoning jurisdiction. Proposed zoning is residential multifamily conditional use. There were a total of three zoning conditions that were proposed with the initial application. These included limiting the use to semi-detached or attached dwellings or townhomes, a maximum density of 6.5 dwelling units per acre, and a condition that each unit shall have a minimum one-car garage. At the public hearing, the applicant indicated that they wanted to revise the conditions. The first two conditions regarding the permitted uses and the maximum density remained unchanged. The applicant revised the condition regarding garages to specify that at least 50% of the townhome units shall have a one... or have a two-car garage, and the remaining units shall have a one-car garage. There was also a condition added to increase the minimum amount of masonry material that were required on building facades from 35 to 40%. Cary's land use plan designates the property for low to medium-density residential development, which is a range of 1 to 8 units per acre. According to Cary's GIS maps, the property is potentially...
Motion to oppose? That motion carries unanimously. And we will move on to our next case.
I move that we return Mr. Warner to our meeting.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor of the motion stated to say aye?
Aye.
Thank you. Mr. Nicholas, we're ready for you.
Okay. Good evening. This is a request to rezone approximately 16.2 acres, located at 9475 and 9493 Chapel Hill Road. Properties are located on the south side of Chapel Hill Road, adjacent to the intersection with Fairbanks Road, approximately 2,000 feet east of the intersection with Northwest Cary Parkway. Both properties are located within the town's corporate limits. This slide shows an arrow view of the subject properties. There are existing dwellings located on both the properties near, near the road. You can also see that the sites are predominantly wooded in the rear of the lots. The properties are currently zoned residential 40. The area in white is land that's in Morrisville and is under Morrisville zoning jurisdiction. Proposed zoning is residential multifamily conditional use. There were a total of three zoning conditions that were proposed with the initial application. These included limiting the use to semi-detached or attached dwellings or townhomes, a maximum density of 6.5 dwelling units per acre, and a condition that each unit shall have a minimum one-car garage. At the public hearing, the applicant indicated that they wanted to revise the conditions. The first two conditions regarding the permitted uses and the maximum density remained unchanged. The applicant revised the condition regarding garages to specify that at least 50% of the townhome units shall have a one, or have a two-car garage, and the remaining units shall have a one-car garage. There was also a condition added to increase the minimum amount of masonry material that were required on building facades from 35 to 40%. Cary's land use plan designates the property for low to medium-density residential development, which is a range of one to eight units per acre. According to Cary's GS maps, the property is potentially impacted by stream buffers. Field determination of these features would be required as part of the site plan review. The Parks and Recreation Master Plan shows a greenway trail along the southeastern border of the property. As indicated in the staff report, that trail was originally proposed to connect across the railroad corridor to a formerly proposed light rail station on Tower View Court. Since that site is no longer being considered for a light rail station, the Parks and Recreation Department has recommended that the trail segment on this property be removed. The Greenway Committee and the PRCR Advisory Board have reviewed this matter and concur with staff's recommendation to remove that segment of the proposed greenway from the subject property. The properties have frontage on Chapel Hill Road, which is designated on the town's comprehensive transportation plan as a major thoroughfare. Since the right-of-way adjacent to the property is not currently at its ultimate planned width, dedication of additional right-of-way and construction would be required along the property's frontage at the time the property develops. There are no existing or planned transit routes along the section of Chapel Hill Road where the properties are located. There is an existing C-Trans route on Northwest Maynard Road, approximately six tenths of a mile to the east. Long-range plans for C-Trans show a potential future route along Northwest Cary Parkway, approximately four tenths of a mile to the west of these properties. The property listed at 9475 Chapel Hill Road contains a dwelling that is listed in the Cary Wake County Architectural and Historical Inventory. The house is identified in the inventory as the Richards House, built in 1938. The inventory describes the house as a two-story, two-bay stone veneer dwelling exhibiting craftsmen-designed features. This slide shows the location of the house on the property. Notice of this public hearing was sent to owners within 400 feet of the subject property. Notice was also posted on the property and published in the Cary News. The town received one protest petition regarding the proposed rezoning, and that property submitted the protests as shown here, highlighted in yellow. Concerns listed on the petition submitted for the case included not knowing the identity of the developer, questions regarding best uses of the property in the neighborhood relative to the adjacent rail corridor and future transit connections, traffic on Chapel Hill Road is another concern, and also, the need to determine the best uses for all property in the neighborhood relative to the commercial development to the west. During the public hearing, some of the speakers expressed concerns regarding traffic on Chapel Hill Road. There were also a couple of speakers that expressed support for the proposed use as townhomes. Staff received one phone call regarding the proposed rezoning. Caller expressed concern regarding traffic on Chapel Hill Road, and also the timing of infrastructure improvements in relation to the development. We also received an email that expressed concern with the proposed access to the development in relation to the intersection of Chapel Hill Road and Fairbanks Road. We have not received any site plan associated with this rezoning, so that's something we haven't, we have not looked at. And this concludes staff's presentation. I believe the applicant is, is here.
Good evening, members of the planning board. My name is Glenda Top, and I'm with Glenda S. Top and Associates, and I'm here tonight representing the property owner and also the potential developers of the property. The request, as staff pointed out, is to rezone the property from R40 to residential multifamily conditional use. The use proposed is townhomes. The land use plan designates the property for low to medium density. We've got a condition stating that the maximum proposed density is 6.5 units per acre, which is within the medium-density range. Just briefly, as staff pointed out, we did modify the zoning conditions from the beginning of the process. We had several neighborhood meetings, and from input at those meetings, we did add the zoning conditions that address garages and present masonry, and this was in response to a concern about the, the potential quality and type of units, and some assurances that these would not have a negative impact on their properties. The land use designations along this portion of Chapel Hill Road have not been changed since the original adoption of the plan in 1996. However, there have been changes in the area, most recently being the major intersection at Cary Parkway and Chapel Hill Road in the town of Morrisville. Given the changes that have occurred, we do believe that medium-density residential is an excellent transition from the adjacent institutional use to the vacant parcel to the west. We will be meeting the, the LDO requirements for buffers that will ensure protection of the adjacent property owners. We do feel that this, the density and use is appropriate at, at this location. The proposed rezoning, as pointed out in the staff report, does meet several of the guiding principles of the growth management plan and the housing plan. As we all know, there's quite a bit of non-residential development within close proximity to this property, so it would provide housing opportunities for people to, to be close to services and less time in a car. Considered an infill piece of property, the infrastructure is in place nearby, and the, the property can be served without having a negative impact on adjacent properties. Want to talk just a moment about the property being adjacent to Chapel Hill Road. Town's comprehensive plan calls for Chapel Hill Road to be a six-lane median-divided roadway with sidewalks. When development occurs on the site, the developer will be required to improve Chapel Hill Road to one-half of its ultimate section. We have been working with the traffic engineer to take a look at these road improvements that would be required, and it is our opinion that building one-half of the ultimate section is not the best solution for the area. We have had preliminary discussions with the engineering staff to see if there is a way to widen Chapel Hill Road to provide a meaningful solution to traffic problems that exist today, which would include, which would include adding left-turn lanes, such as a left-turn lane at Fairbanks. We're committed to working with staff, however, as was pointed out in our meetings with staff, and as Wayne just mentioned, this is a conditional use zoning request, and, and it does not really allow us to submit a site plan. So, the alternatives that we have suggested to staff, and they're open to, to reviewing them, would need to be looked at at the time of site plan. So, right now, we understand that our commitment is to widen that portion of the road to a six-lane section, but we do feel that there are other alternatives that can be proposed that would actually address the problems out there and solve those problems. We held two neighborhood meetings, and as I pointed out earlier, we did revise zoning conditions. Do want to add that at both meetings, no one ever expressed a concern about the use being proposed or the density. So, those issues, no one had a problem with the, the use, as, as pointed out at the meetings. At the public hearing, there was some opposition. Concerns were expressed about traffic. Wayne mentioned the other ones. There were also several people who spoke at the public hearing in favor of the request. A protest petition was filed. As your map pointed out, it is for the property along our western boundary. It is a vacant parcel, and the parcel is adjacent to Morrisville. I just want to briefly touch on a couple of the issues that were raised in the petition. The adjunct rail corridor and future transit connections leave many questions unanswered relative to the best uses for all property in this area and neighborhood. Staff points out in their report that Triangle Transit's regional plans envision a light rail corridor with a station near the site. Understand it might be a ways off, but there, there are plans, you know, for those of us that have been here a long time, you know, maybe it will happen. But again, given that potential and the, the Chapel Hill Road being adjacent to our property, we do feel that the proposed townhomes is a good use, and it does follow sound planning principles. Contiguous commercial movie theater area to the west of the proposed rezoning will either be redeveloped, or at least updated and expanded, opening further reason for more study and evaluation as to the best uses of all property in the area and neighborhood. We actually took some time looking at what the best use of the property would be. For us, at least in this location, we had meetings with staff to talk about what the town envisioned for this area. This area on the plan does show low to medium-density residential. In our opinion, with the existing development in Morrisville already approved for commercial and the potential for, for additional commercial land in Morrisville to be developed as commercial, that residential is an appropriate use for this property. We also want to note that the traffic that would be generated from townhomes is less than what would be generated from commercial, and, and would be less than, than other potential uses that could be on this property. Staff pointed out, the Richard House, since the public hearing, we have met with staff on the site. So, we did have a site visit with, with staff and, and other members of the group that come out with Anna to look at the house. I also met with Anna today to, to talk a little bit more. I do want to point out that the client is, is interested in, in keeping the house. You know, he, he understands the importance of it and understands that, that it is something that would be meaningful to remain. He's open to exploring opportunities to do this. I do want to point out a couple of things that could affect the house. One is the widening of Chapel Hill Road. It will take some land on our side. It's an asymmetrical widening, so there will be impact from widening the road. And also, of course, there's impact from just saving the house on the proposed, for the proposed development and using, losing units. So, what the applicant would like to do is to continue a dialogue through the process and, and work with the town in, in exploring options for saving the house. In summary, the area has changed since the adoption of the land use plan. We do believe there is a need for additional residential development in the area. The proposed use fits in this location. The required buffers in the LDO and stream buffers that are potentially on the site will further buffer this piece of property from the adjoining property owners. We ask for your support, and I'll be happy to answer any questions if you have any. And other members of the team are here also, if you want to talk to them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
At this point, I will open the public hearing and invite anyone that would like to address us to folks at the podium. Is anyone? I thought there might be someone.
Good evening, board members. My name is Mac Patel. I'm, I'm representing the Cary Hill Developer LLC. I'm a proud Cary resident for the last 20 years, and a North Carolinian for 21 years. Cary is my hometown. We are a local developer. We are planning to develop quality townhomes. Our goal is to earn a good reputation by building a quality residential development. We are proposing for a low-density community, which is only six and a half units per acre, instead of maximum allowed 12 units per acre. This will allow us to build a quality neighborhood. As far as the builders are concerned, we already have had a meeting with several local builders and contractors, and all these companies are local companies who has, you know, built quality homes in the area. I'm here to assure everyone that we are looking to build a unique and a peaceful neighborhood, which will be a very appropriate fit for this part of the town. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address us?
Good evening, everyone, Mr. Chairman and all the members of the committee. My name is Dr. Raj Makam. I'm a practicing gastroenterologist in Cary, and also served as the chairman of SP Temple for three years. I'm expressing this as my personal opinion. In my opinion, this proposed project development would be a right one to come next to the SP Temple, where nearly 30,000 devotees consider this as their place of worship. A housing development with its quietness would complement the serene atmosphere of the temple. I have spoken with the developer and several people, in our temple members and other committee members, and the developer has promised to bring a very nice development to this parcel of land, and keep up with the overall expectation of our beautiful city of Cary and a beautiful temple next door, which is an icon of North Carolina. I support the proposed development next to our temple. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address us?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, and members of the Planning and Zoning Board. My name is Hari Naath, and I have lived in Cary since 1980. I'll be brief, because I know you want to get to the issues very quickly. I stand here before you as a friend of the applicant and member of the Indian American community in Cary. My only interest in this property is that it is adjacent to the Hindu temple, and the plan for the property may assist some of the devotees to reside near the temple. In addition, the subject property is at a walkable distance from nearby retail enterprises, and it will benefit all residents of the homes on this property. I must state that as a former member of the Planning and Zoning Board, I carefully evaluated requests that change the zoning of the property from R40 to residential multifamily units. However, each property has its own profile and characteristics, and town, characteristics, and town needs to examine each case in lights of its unique circumstances. I believe that this property is ideally suited for residential multifamily zoning. I hope you will come to the same conclusion after reviewing the staff report. The applicant plans to develop the property for a high-quality townhomes that are most suitable for this area. However, there are two primary issues related to this property. Number one, there is a valid protest filed against this request. I hope you will examine carefully the protest. I hope you'll find that all the arguments against the rezoning lack merit. Second issue is related to the Richard House on the property that is listed on the Cary Wake County Architecture and Historical Inventory. As I understand, current property owners were not aware of this designation when they acquired the property. Unfortunately, solutions to this issue are very limited. The structure of the home does not permit relocation. Even though property owners are not obligated to retain the house, they are trying to work with the town of Cary to find a solution that will maintain economical viability of the project and determine if the Richard House could be saved. They will also consult with Capital Area Preservation Society to assess any potential solution. I'm sure you will deliberate on these issues carefully and arrive at a decision that is a win-win solution for the town of Cary and the applicant. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address us? Anyone? Seeing no one approach the podium, I'm going to close the public hearing and open this case up for board discussion. Questions?
Yes, for Mr. Nichols. Could you go to slide 26? And point out the townhouses that are to the east?
There's some, not sure if they're townhouses, but there's a, I'm sorry? Over here in this area off of Fairbanks Road?
Yeah, there are single-family houses over there.
Right.
Small.
Correct. Correct.
Small lot.
They're not townhomes. They're small, single-family detached.
Mm-hmm.
That's at a density of about a little over five units per acre across the street.
Okay. And then the density further on around is fairly large lot.
In this area here, it's, there's fairly larger lots. The land use plan calls for medium-density residential, but it's, at the current time, there are larger lots across the street, correct?
And I have a question on the traffic. Do we, do we know the number of, the amount of traffic at rush hour? I know this hasn't been a traffic study done for this project, but we, do we know the volume of traffic, not for the whole day, but for rush hour, for evening and, evening and morning peaks?
I don't have, I don't have current volumes, rush hour volumes on that. We have a daily volume of 14,000 cars a day, but roughly the peak hour is about 10% of that, so it'll be 1,400 cars roughly for a two-lane roadway.
Now, currently, that is a two-lane road. I know that there have been plans for many years dating back until, back into the 60s to try to widen that. At one time, the answer was extremely strong, no. Has there been any progress on getting that widened?
We don't have, neither the town nor the state has any funding available currently right now. There's a feasibility study called NC 54 and More that's looking at the corridor, but there hasn't been any dedicated capital funds by the city or the, or the state to widen that road right now.
At least they're not saying no as strongly as they used to if they're studying it.
Well, it's all about priorities, and I don't think they see it as a higher priority right now.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Other questions?
I have a question on the protest. Does that constitute what we would call a valid protest, and what ramifications would it have on?
It would, it would be a valid protest. It'd require a supermajority vote at the council.
Thank you.
Six, six affirmative votes to pass.
I have a few questions that pertain to what's germane for us to make a decision on. The applicant had mentioned a few moments ago what sounded to me like above and beyond the requirements for improving the side of Chapel Hill Road. Mentioned a traffic light and some other larger turn lanes, and also talked about some things with regard to the, the Richard House. They're non-binding since they do not exist in, in the conditions here, correct?
Correct. So, there's nothing, nothing's been proposed regarding those two issues right now.
Great, thank you. One other thing, if I may.
Okay.
Can you just help me visualize, and I get the percentage difference, but just from a visualization standpoint, what's the difference between a 35% masonry and a 40% masonry?
It's a small amount, obviously. It's not, I mean, 35% is the, is the minimum amount of masonry that would be required for uncertain building facades for attached residential. So, the applicant's offered 40%, which is slightly above 35, so.
Just for clarification and to piggyback on what Mark was saying, so with, with, in regards to the Richards House and the widening of the road or doing some kind of modifications to Chapel Hill Road, would that be identified and submitted at site plan?
It could be, or it could also be something that the applicant might choose to propose following the, following the Planning and Zoning Board.
Okay.
You know, they still have the option of proposing conditions even when it goes back to the town council, so even though it's not proposed yet, I mean, it's something they could, but it hasn't been proposed right now.
Okay.
Can, can I ask the same question of the applicant?
One to top, I may have to get Jerry Jensen to help me out here, but to correct me if I'm wrong or incorrect. We are required, I mean, the, by ordinance, we will be required to improve the portion of our road, period. That, as I understand it, we will have to, you know, when we come in for site plan, we will be showing something along Chapel Hill Road. When we met last week with one of the staff members in the engineering department, we, we talked about other possibilities that, that could potentially be proposed alternatives to what would be the, the actual requirement, but it's my understanding that, that those items, at least from leaving that meeting with staff the other day, that those items are not addressed at zoning, they would be addressed at site plan. Is that correct?
Yeah, I could clarify that a little bit. Site plan requirements such as widening the road frontage to our normal thoroughfare standards, that's something that is not pertinent in this particular rezoning case. If they wanted to deviate how they widen the roadway one way or the other, that's more of a site plan issue that would be sent to council for consideration through a quasi-judicial process. Now, if the applicant chose to offer some additional items that are outside of our normal thoroughfare widening along their frontage, if they want to introduce those types of offerings to this particular board and to council that, that may help either mitigate traffic or improve safety in that corridor, then they're, they're more than welcome to suggest an offering as a condition of a rezoning approval. So, there are some differences in there, but again, anything outside of a normal widening, we probably don't look at at this point in time.
Other questions?
I do have one more regarding the historic property. Has the town engaged in discussions on preserving that to any extent?
I'll let Ms. Redling respond to that.
We have, we toured the house and with the developer there, and we have, we told them that we would look into the cost of moving the house, and Capital Area Preservation did check on that, and it came in around $100,000 to move the house. And that's about as far as we've gotten as far as plans. That was our first thought, was could it be moved? And we think that if it's preserved, it will need to be preserved on the site.
And I'll just ask, do you think that that could be, those discussions could go on further and be productive with additional time, either between now and council, or if this were?
We can certainly work on that and continue to have conversations, yes.
I guess if I can ask the applicant sort of the same question, is that something the applicant would entertain further discussions on that?
Yes, sir, it's our intentions to, to continue to discuss with, with staff alternatives. I know in speaking with Ms. Redling today, she did tell me, you know, the potential cost of moving, so I can, or I think we concur that, that the best solution is going to be, it's going to have to stay where it is and understand. And then again, in our meetings with engineering last week, I think part of the discussion moving forward is also going to be exactly what's going to be expected from the road widening and what that impact will have. So, absolutely, we want to continue talking and do what we can in working with the staff, Capital Area, Capital Area Preservation, anyone else that Anna brings in.
And if that were delayed, would that impact your schedule? Is that a critical?
We're, we're good to, we can continue, I mean, what we, I, I think, I think what we would like to see happen is, again, it's up to the board to have a vote tonight, and then we will continue the dialogue with, with Anna, because this would not go to council before, I mean, it's like the 19th of December, it's the second meeting they have, and if we're not ready, we can always, you know, continue that.
Thank you.
Additional questions?
Well, while we're on the subject of the house, could someone just point that out on the slide that's out there right now? Just put the cursor on that. Okay. And do you know the distance between that and the edge of the existing road?
One second, I'm going to get a better slide here. I don't know the distance between the house and the road, but I understand why you're asking if the road has to be widened asymmetrically. It could, it's not certain at this point how close that would bring it to the house.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Quick question on the LDO. The LDO currently has this property for low or medium density. Is that correct?
The land use plan.
The land use.
Right.
Yes, okay. And reading from staff report, just trying to get a little clarification on this. If an applicant came and asked for a medium-density zoning on this property, they could go one to eight dwellings on medium density?
Well, low density is one to three units and medium density is three to eight, so.
Yeah, yeah, I don't care about the low. The medium density, which is within the, the LDO parameter. Somebody come and ask for a medium density, and then under the medium density, single-family is defined as attached uses might include duplexes, triplexes, and townhomes. So, somebody could come and ask for this to be zoned to medium density and put townhomes there at eight units per acre.
Correct, that could be requested.
So, is it fair, is it, is it a fair statement that this proposal is more restrictive on the developer than a medium-density zoning would be?
It's still medium density. It's more restrictive than what could be allowed.
Exactly, yeah, that's, that's what I'm trying to get at.
Yes.
So, that's a fair statement?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
Other questions? In that case, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion. I'll move that we forward 13 R A Z 19 to town council with a recommendation for approval finding that it is consistent with the comprehensive plan and all other applicable plans and is reasonable and in the public interest for the reasons set forth in the staff report and presentations.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Warner, did you have your hand up first?
Any, any, mine, mine, mine.
I'm trying to be sensitive to scan the crowd here so we pass. I'm, I'm going to give this to Mr. Warner because he had his hand up before you, so. Discussion.
Mr. Chairman, the reason I second the, the motion is the fact that, first of all, the proposed applicant has presented something that is authorized under the land use plan and at a smaller density. Number two, the transition from the commercial area to the northwest is, I find that to be very attractive and appropriate for this particular land. Also, I noticed that there's a similar townhouse community, the North Woods crossings, and just going through there, the townhouses are very similar to what's being proposed here, i.e., one and two garage, car garage units with masonry, I would guesstimate in the same arena of the 40% that they're proposing. Also, the fact that the developer seems to have worked with the community in addressing some of their issues. Last, the, there is a concern about the roadway, but I believe that that will be appropriately addressed by staff when it goes to site plan approval.
Other comments?
Yes, I'm, I say a lot of good things and a lot, and some bad things. First, as far as what I like about it, I like townhomes, or I certainly don't dislike them. Some of our leading citizens in Cary live in townhomes, so I'm, I'm all in favor of them. And I do like the, the density, which is much less than, than what it could be, and I think it would be a good transition. As far as the road, where you were faced with a two-lane road, and we probably for quite some time will be faced with a two-lane road there. I first talked to what at then, that time was known as the Highway Department in the 60s, late 60s, about widening that entire stretch, and I was basically, put it simply, I was told, no, no way. I do think we're making some progress, but it'll still be a long time before we actually see money, which is what's required. As far as widening the road as would be developed, as be required for this development and any other development, I think there's probably nothing as useless as a 600 and I believe it's 675-foot-long wide part you can't drive on because it's not enough room to, to pass or anything, so it couldn't be a lane, it just accumulate debris. So, I don't think that that is particularly useful and probably a waste of asphalt. However, there are some possibilities which are not part of the rezoning but would come about in site plan, there's some possibilities that, of what could be done instead. As, as Ms. Tubb pointed out, they are looking at some, some other possibilities, which I think would, could be very good. The one basic thing, well, one thing, a problem I have is the people making turns out of this. Again, there may be some solutions that could be worked out as site plan to make it not quite as bad as it could be, but it's still a problem no matter what's done. The biggest problem I have is the additional traffic placed on Highway 54, which is overloaded at rush hour now, and is a problem. Putting additional traffic onto that, I don't like. So, as I said, there's some, some very good things and some, some things I don't like. The problems, particularly the traffic problem, which won't be solved until sometime well into the future when this is expanded to create a number of lanes, that I think would cause me to oppose this. But I think there are some, some very good things that should be looked at at site plan and some reasons to like this project.
Other comments?
I, I have some in the spirit of passing on to council what our rationale is, as Mr. Gascoigne pointed out on the earlier case. I, I also think the use here is appropriate, although the density tends toward the higher end of medium density in this location. I think that probably is appropriate, given the surroundings and the transition seems reasonable. I have a, a single concern, which is with the historic property, the Richards House that's on, on the property. It is not only, as was pointed out, a, a fine example of the craftsman architecture. According to Capital Area Preservation, it is one of the finest intact such structures in the entire vicinity, in, in this entire area in Wake County. And I would encourage additional discussion to try and preserve it ideally on-site, would is always preferred. Many people know that historic preservation is something I advocate for, but this isn't just my opinion. As the staff report points out, the rezoning without any conditions does not at present address the issue of preservation of the historic Richard House and therefore does not further the goals of the Historic Preservation Master Plan. Certainly, the property owners have the right and the wherewithal to develop their property, and in the absence of an ordinance, protecting historic structures, the best we can ask for is additional discussion, and I just would like to see a little bit more binding commitment toward that. I applaud and appreciate that the applicants will be doing that, and I certainly trust that they will continue. But in this case, I think the structure is so important, I'd like to see something a little more binding, and so on that issue only, I'll, I'll oppose the motion, but I support the remainder of the proposal.
Other discussion?
Saying, I'm going to put my two cents where then. I really like the idea of having medium density adjacent to the shopping center to the northwest. These folks are going to be able to walk to, I think there's a theater over there or something and, and stores, and, and we, we have all too few good examples of that, and Cary, this is an opportunity to have a great example. I think I'd kind of like to live there, and, and I think it's a great transition. Now, we're always going to have heartburn about Chapel Hill Road. I mean, that has been a, an issue for this town for as long as I can remember, and I don't know that we're going to get it fixed in this discussion. I don't know if we're going to get it fixed in my lifetime, frankly, at the speed we're going, but I don't think it should. going, but I don't think it should limit the ability to develop this property. I, I share the concern about the historic structure. I hope we can do something, but I'm not prepared to make it an issue in a rezoning. I think the applicant is expressing a desire to try to be creative here, but I'm not going to limit the rezoning based upon that issue alone. So if we have no other, oh, Ms. Meara.
I will make one comment since I made the motion, and that is regarding the historic house. And we, we come up against this often. This is probably the third time in the last two years that we've seen a house like this that, and, and I have voted against or tabled rezonings because of this, and I feel very strongly about the preservation of that house. In this case, we have a good body of information that's already been collected, and that's why I'm happy to go ahead and move it forward and let the council deal with that, as opposed to cases that have come before us where no consideration has really been given, no one has taken any steps to find out about the house, the condition of the house. So, so that's why I'm going, going to go ahead and move it forward and trust that the applicant and staff and the council will be able to resolve the historic home issue and have every confidence that they'll be able to do that. So, so anyway, that's my only comment, because I have, I don't want to, you know, I want to explain my rationale there on the historic home, because it is an important issue to me.
If there are no more comments, I'm going to call this to a vote. All those in favor of the motion as stated, say aye.
Aye.
Can we get hands here? Okay, so I, my count that is seven. All those opposed?
No.
No.
Two. So that motion carries seven to two. And I believe that's the last item on our agenda. And so if we have new, no new or old business, I would add a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second motion, we have a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That motion carries unanimously.